Testimonial of the presenters, PP advising you here to do in the presentation that you are under oath before the Commissioners' Court. Public comments? 2.1 Discussion on Appropriate Action to Amend Personal Policies for Emergency Work Performed by County Employees and Overtime Pay. In this regard, Commissioners, this was put on the agenda as you guys know. We had the emergency center for the warming this past freeze that occurred a couple of weeks ago. We had several employees from Dimon County that were from different offices that went and assisted. It was a 24-hour warming center, so it was open 24 hours by law. We had to have somebody there because in fact we were able to service about eight families that needed shelter. So because we had to have 24-hours surveillance, if you will, or somebody posted there. We had different individuals from different departments assist with being there on post. With that being said, obviously, the time went over in terms of their hours. And I was advised by our treasurer, I was advised by our auditor, actually, that they could get paid time and a half. After that occurred, the treasurer came and clarified and said that that was not in fact true. Mr. Ferreira advised me that he thought that based on the old policies that Dimon County had prior to my administration, it was allowed to where there was a state of disaster or emergency declared by the county judge and any Dimon County employee that performed any duties outside of their normal hours would be able to get paid that overtime. However, I was advised by our treasurer, Mr. Ortiz, that that in fact had been changed at some point so that they could not get paid. So instead, they had to do comp and that they had to take that comp time within so many days from the time that they did the actual hours. So in speaking to Mr. Ferreira, Mr. Ferreira advised me that he felt that, I agreed with him at the time and I still do, that the employees that have to work overtime, especially if it's a holiday on an emergency or something that's been declared a disaster by the county judge or the state governor, that they should be able to be eligible for overtime to be paid out contrary to just having comp time. So that's what this is here for.
May I?
Go ahead, sir.
Just from what I understand, it's like you're trying to amend this policy to retro?
No.
No, sir, just moving forward.
So as at this time, the people that work those, that disaster, they're gonna get comp time?
It's, okay, it's not retro because it's within the safety area.
Well, my question is, those people that work, or employees, actually, it's those people, I apologize. The employees that worked that day for those couple of days, if I understand, if I read the amendment policy, that we're trying to amend a policy means that they already worked, but if we amend a policy, it should start from the day we amend the policy forward.
Or since?
Because not everybody was given a chance to work on this. I got several calls from county employees that if this was the case, why weren't they notified? It was just, and not going against anybody, but the employees were already selected. So if somebody goes out there, are like, we didn't know where to work.
Well, they would be whoever's, I mean, is not favorable to, let's suppose if your precincts are involved.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Okay. Sorry, sir. So if it's not your department that was in charge of it, then you wouldn't be eligible. I mean, in this case, it was basically the county judge.
But if a disaster happens, it's not just, it comes open to a county.
Well, but this was a disaster?
Yes, you're wrong.
Because?
Because it was, I was, I was spearheading it and it was a, it was a holiday and I asked several of my staff members, Sheriff Castañeda. I contacted all the people that I knew to contact you. I contacted you as well to see if you wanted to assist with the warming center, Commissioner.
I assisted?
Yes, thank you very much. And Commissioner Juan, Commissioner Udena, I called Commissioner Valerio as well, the sheriff's office, the city of Carizo, everybody that I called. And at that point, some of those departments asked me if I needed some of their employees to come assist. I said yes. Commissioner Udena sent some of his individuals, sheriff sent some of his. I asked my staff if they would be willing to give up their holiday to come and help. I mean, I was there managing it as well till about 1:00 in the morning for the three days that we were there. My staff said that they would. Like I said, I had people from my staff, I had people from Sheriff Castañeda's department, some from Commissioner Udena's department, some from the city of Carizo. So it's not necessarily that we picked, it was whoever wanted to volunteer. I was more than happy to welcome them to come work for me. So if you had any employees that wanted to work and you asked if they could, I was more than happy to have them there because it was the same people and I, it's not about picking certain departments. It was just whoever wanted to go and help.
At the warming center?
Right.
So that's where the emergency was and so whoever worked that, then those would be the ones that were qualified. And this is the same thing in any other emergency that we have. It would be dedicated to that. So if there was flooding in your precinct, then that would become an emergency and that's where they would be eligible.
My question is, may I? What?
No, I was gonna say, the only thing that I wanted to change to this policy is basically, because I think you had the 31 days, right? You had to take the holiday, you had 31 days?
That's what you had requested.
Yeah, but we had requested, but I think what we need to do is basically change that and have it accrue. Basically to have a little bit more incentive on.
But I can see what Commissioner Juan is trying to say. When does it take a badge? That's what he's trying to ask. Since they already work and we're gonna, not understand.
Oh, we're gonna do it as of the last pay period, the last, the end, the beginning of this pay period. It's within this pay period, within this pay period. And so work, so you're gonna approve the comp time. So it's not retroactive because you're approving the comp time within this pay period.
There was my next, oh, you're gonna pay them comp time then, since we're gonna approve it today?
Well, and that's what we're.
No, no, you just said comp time.
Comp time. Right, right.
Okay, so it's gonna be comp time, not overtime, not time and a half?
Well, what, basically what we're requesting is that stuff like this, or it becomes an emergency, that it does get paid out.
You, you're contradicting yourself?
No.
Yes, you said overtime now comp time, which is it?
Well.
Well, just, just for clarification. So overtime is any time worked more than 40 hours in a work week. The local government has the ability to, instead of cash payment, they can give comp time instead of paying it out. What happened on the holiday was that you can't consider paid time off, which was those holiday hours, as hours worked to earn overtime and give the comp time. That's why it was a different situation. But on the next day, on Tuesday, they are gonna earn the comp time because we're not factoring in any holiday hours because they actually worked their normal shift and then they went to go to the warming center. So they would essentially earn the comp time.
But they would, so if they were, were, sorry, if they were working during that day and they were over there, that doesn't count?
No, it does not count.
Okay, so after hours, now here's what I was told one time by Mr., one of your employees, that we worked a holiday. Your employee, your head employee stated that the only way that they would get paid overtime, what, or the only way that they would get paid overtime, or how, okay, or four hours of overtime and the rest of comp time. That's what, they might, always worked all day, one day, and on Saturday, we have to do, work on the road. He said they only get four hours of overtime and four hours of comp time. So we also need to clarify that.
Right.
Because right now, I'm in the, I'm in the old way, the way they explain it to me. And I'm not, I'm not trying to start, but I'm just telling you how I was told.
Right.
And I remember to.
Was that, was that worth?
Because ultimately, it's based on the 40 hours for that work week. So the hours may change, like you said, it could be four and four, or it can be three and five, or it can be two and six, or it can be the whole eight.
Right. I just want clarification.
Right. But it's all based on the 40 hours in a work week.
But if they worked 40 hours and it was Saturday, the Saturday.
If they worked all the 40 hours and then they worked on a Saturday, the whole thing will go to comp time.
The eight hours, but it becomes time and a half.
Yes, because you take the eight, multiply by one and a half.
Now you're still now saying that it's comp time, it's not overtime.
No, no, no.
What, what, who worked on Saturday?
No, I'm saying.
They made the holiday themselves.
Because that's what we're saying.
It's confusing.
No, it goes to accumulate into the comp time.
So the point is, we're gonna pay them just the holiday and the other one to comp time?
Well, that's what we're going forward, we would pay in emergencies, right, that gets declared here.
I don't have a problem with that, but what I'm saying is, right now, the only money that is available is for the holiday. The rest are comp time, right? You just said a while ago, this is the way you explained it.
Okay.
That they can get paid for the holiday, but the rest comes comp time.
Yes, okay, so I work, okay, your employees work on, your employees work on holiday, okay? They work 10 hours, that's, well, that's, okay, your employees work on the holiday.
If your employee worked on holiday.
10 hours, okay? That holiday would become time and a half. Because it gets paid at time and a half because it's holiday.
But not all the eight hours, correct?
Yes.
Because a holiday wouldn't, they need working, so which one is it?
No, no, if they worked a holiday, 10 hours.
I understand, but wait a minute.
The whole, the whole eight hours.
You're missing out everything.
Okay, so the whole eight hours.
So the policy states you gotta work 40 hours in order to get overtime, correct?
Yes, correct.
But holiday, no, but holiday.
Holiday is not working.
But if they worked a holiday, 10 hours.
If you work on the holiday, you can use those hours to afford.
Right, that's what I'm saying, out of the eight, are they gonna get paid all of them or they just gonna get comp time?
No, but if you work a holiday, even if you work 32 hours, you work a holiday.
I just wanna be clear, because I don't wanna put my food in my mouth and then I'm gonna be arguing with other elected officials.
The policy states time and a half. Regardless of whether you work 32 hours or not, for holiday, you get paid time and a half, right? If the policy says you pay time and a half for holiday, you're gonna get time and a half.
If that's what the policy says?
Yes, so regardless of whether you work the third, the 32 hours or not.
Other officially not comp time.
Yeah.
Okay, so what is it?
So if you work a holiday and says you're gonna get paid time and a half, you're gonna get time and a half.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
But the holiday?
The holiday.
Right, the other is come is come time.
Well, we would pay, so, right, so eight hours are, okay.
So we're paying whatever they work at time and a half, I don't have a problem, but the other time will be comp time.
You, who?
He's, he's asking, you're asking in cash, right? You're asking for them to get paid in cash, like on a holiday, is that what you're asking?
No, the holiday, we can pay it, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, but that's what we're getting at, we were basically saying an emergency like this, so basically convert it to getting paid cash, not accumulating it.
On your own, we never paid?
Well, that's up to you, that's right, that's up to you, so we're gonna do it.
Am I correct or not?
Yes.
Okay, we never had paid for emergency, we've all been involved in emergency, all five men have been involved, whatever they had, the flood, we never paid them?
But we all did change it to utilities did get paid.
Yeah, utilities does get paid, they do, that's why.
And law enforcement.
Right, but there was only in case of an emergency.
Right, and it's a disaster.
This is the same thing.
The disaster, so there's a flood and his staff had to come up there, it was paid it twice.
But what I'm saying is when the old administration, like we always say, the old administration, whenever they had something, a flood or whatever, we never got paid.
Before.
They never got paid, they always had comp time.
Yes, okay, before the utility department would get paid double time.
But I'm not talking about the utility department, that's a total different animal. I'm saying that whenever we were called out on an emergency, the flooding or the corpus people were coming down, all employees got comp time.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, so I don't have a problem paying the holiday, but the rest come with comp time. I'm just, I'm just saying one vote, I'm just one vote, but that's the way we have it before.
If that's the way you wanted, you can have that one.
That's what I'm saying. Okay, I don't have a problem paying them for the holiday, no, we worked it, they deserve to get paid. But the comp time is where we're crossing the line, I think.
And one thing I did want to verify and explain also, because I was explaining to the treasurers, to treasurer, is that let's suppose Tuesday is a holiday, or Monday's a holiday, Tuesday's payroll. If, let's suppose, the computer breaks down and it's not available until Monday morning, his staff has to come in on Monday to prepare, so he gets the 10 hours. So that would automatically become an emergency for his office and so he would be eligible, his staff would be eligible to take the time and a half, or the time and a half is a holiday pay.
They give time and a half?
His staff.
But do you go pay them?
Yes, because they would be, so it becomes an emergency for him and they had to come in on a holiday.
Or? When did that happen, I mean, come on, maybe it never happened before. Who, who got paid whenever?
I'm seeing that they would be eligible, they would also have, be eligible to do the time and a half.
Okay, so if we're gonna amend this, I wanted to reflect that everybody gets paid.
Well, whoever, yes, whoever.
Now you're coming with another department, so every department that has something in an emergency or they have a holiday and they work, they're gonna get paid all the official thing on the same, same.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that you have to.
No, no, no.
Do that as comp time also, so there's an election.
Are you just saying they're gonna get paid?
Well, no, I'm saying is that you need to take in consideration that that happens and so they're eligible to do the comp time also.
Well, right now, let's just, you're throwing us off, like abusing us. So what, right now, let's just concentrate on this emergency work.
Okay.
I'm gonna make the motion that they only get paid the holiday pay and the rest will be comp time.
Okay, that's okay.
And change it, I'm sorry, Commissioner? No, wait. And if we all, if they're, if we're gonna pay everybody, then let it be written down. That way, I don't have to argue with anybody, because that's the problem. We agree on something, then something comes up and then here I am arguing with a person because that's not the way we said it, correct? Is that arguing, discussing, not arguing, discussing? No, no, I'm not talking about you, I'm saying that I always question them, I always ask. I'm always at the top of them because they, on the comp time and everything else, if we're gonna change all of that, then let it be written down, that way I don't have, that way I don't want my mouth.
We'll come back to that.
So essentially, Commissioner, it's us approving that anybody that works during an emergency that has been declared as an emergency by the county judge or the state governor and they work during a holiday, they're gonna get paid time and a half.
Right.
And our motion, Commissioner, along with the motion is that they only emergencies and that's for everybody, for everybody.
I'm talking about.
No, no, we're not, this, Commissioner, can I speak?
Yes.
This, this agenda is for future policy. It's a policy that we're changing for the future. It's not necessarily just for what happened a couple of weeks ago. This policy is to amend it moving forward that any, any department, whether it's your department, his department, Mr. Ferreira, Mr. Gonzalez, anybody's department, that the county judge declares a disaster, an emergency, or the governor declares an emergency or disaster in our, in our town, in our community, and we have any employee, whether it be utility, whether it be Mr. Gonzalez's department, and they have to work on a holiday, they're going to get paid time and a half during that holiday. And then any hours after that, that's not a holiday, is comp time, is that correct?
Right, that, that one.
Because this is not, this is, this policy.
This is, we're talking right now and, and I see, not disrespectfully, right now, we're talking about the warming center.
No, no, it was, it was.
And that's what, that's what I'm relying on, on the warming center, the eight hours. And then you jump to here and I got all confused.
No, so let me just, and I understand, let me just clarify. The reason why this is on here was because of what happened at the warming center.
Okay.
Because like I said again, whenever we were putting the warming center together, I called everybody to see that we're gonna, if anybody wanted to help, you guys brought waters and all this other stuff. Mr. Ferreira told me, any of the employees that worked that day can get time and a half. So I asked my staff, Commissioner Udena brought some of his, the sheriff brought some of his, and I told him what Mr. Ferreira told me. Come to find out, again like always, Mr. Ortiz and Mr. Ferreira have two ways of thinking and then we are crossways with each other. So then Mr. Ortiz says, Judge, what Mr. Ferreira said is not right, you can't do that. Because I'm pretty sure, not to throw my employees under the bus, but I don't know if they would have wanted to work on a holiday because I'm taking their holiday if it wasn't gonna get paid time and a half. But I reflected what Mr. Ferreira told me. So when I had to advise them that they couldn't get paid time and a half because Mr. Ortiz said that Mr. Ferreira was wrong, they said that was fine, just put in a comp time. Nobody got mad, nobody, they didn't wanna quit on me, nothing like that. I told Mr. Udena as well because he had some of his employees working out there. I told the sheriff as well because he had some of his employees out there. Everybody said, okay, so Mr. Ferreira said the best way to fix it is put it on the agenda and have a special meeting. So moving forward, the policy is because of what happened, now we're not talking about this is gonna be for this, because of what happened, moving forward, we need to change the policy so that if they do work on a holiday, whether it's your employee or my employee, on a holiday, they get time and a half and the other days that they work extra hours past the 40 can be comp time or can be paid as well overtime. So let me make.
That's what was completed just.
I should have explained it to you instead of.
That's where, he was saying something and then, again, the treasurer, and I'm like.
But that also includes, let's suppose, because disaster was still on Tuesday, so any time for overtime is still going at time and a half and will be approved in the comp time.
With accrues for the record?
Paid.
You're talking to, with the judge calls us out, correct? And it's a holiday, they get paid, not just because, a while ago, you said if his computers go down and they call them in and a holiday, they're gonna get paid, but that's not what we agree to, you're just saying whenever it occurs a disaster.
It's not gonna be a disaster like that, like that disaster.
Right, that's what he said.
That disaster get paid, I'm just saying that, that they would be eligible for time and a half and the crews in comp time, and we'll make that part of the policy.
We'll make it clear because a while ago, you said he can pay them if he wants to. So which one is the, see, this is where I get crossed out all the time.
That's what I'm saying, that's exactly what I'm saying and it's, it's not to, I mean, it's not to be offensive to anybody, if you can offend it, well, I'm sorry, but like I said, Mr. Ferreira tells me one thing, Mr. Ortiz tells me one thing, and we get crossways with each other because then we're giving information and I'm sure it's happened to you guys because clearly you said that Eric told you something and then it's something else. So we all have to be on the same page in order to move forward successfully and be moving on along with this. So the only reason why I put this is because I was there to, it doesn't matter to me, I don't get paid overtime or not, but the staff was there, his staff was there, the sheriff's staff was there, some of the JP staff went as well and they were there working and I did, I'll be honest with you, y'all might not agree with me, but I felt bad because they were there working on their day off and I felt bad and I felt that they should be properly compensated. That's why I talked to Mr. Ferreira, then Mr. Ortiz comes to me on Tuesday, Wednesday, whatever day it was, and they said, no, we can't do that, and I said, well, Mr. Ferreira said we could, so that's why we did it.
And the thing was that the policy that basically that we have, that I have written, basically.
Okay, Mr. Ferreira, what does the policy state right now?
Right now, we have to take it in three days.
No, no, what does the policy state right now on the overtime and, and the comp time?
Right now, the policy says a utility department, Mr. Udena's and the sheriffs, if they were on a holiday, they can get time and a half. Everybody else has to use it as comp time and it has to be taken within five days, is what he told. That's how I read the policy.
This, right on this one?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, they can't get one from the other. I mean, if we read, maybe reading.
Motion needs to pay them the holiday and then the other comp time.
No, no.
Okay, motion. Okay, that's what I was saying, yeah. Second.
You gonna say?
No, that was my motion, to pay them the holiday and the rest.
So let me just reiterate what you said, that your motion is that to amend the personal policy for emergency work or a disaster declared by the county judge or the governor for all employees that work on a holiday to be paid time and a half. All other times is considered comp time, is that correct? Is that your motion, Commissioner? You got that, Mr. Garcia? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juan Cahuana? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you.
So for clarification, if it's only five hours that they worked on the holiday, just those five hours would get paid cash at time and a half.
Correct.
And the other three would get paid normal because they're in normal holiday hours.
If they don't work the whole day, yes?
2.2 Discussion on Appropriate Action to Add the Additional Amount Left Off From Final Settlement. Settlement of Aiden Hiller and landfill closeout. As you can see, gentlemen, there, it's the last time we, the payout for the liquidated damages from the landfill, it was my understanding at the time when we finished Commissioners' Court that Mr. Ferreira's office had calculated incorrectly the final amount. So there was an amount missing, let's see, how much was supposed to be paid? So the amount was short, therefore, we need, we still owe Mr. Hiller a certain amount of money, which is, I believe, the $78,102. Is that correct, Mr. Ferreira?
Yes, ma'am. So it totals, it'll be $279,755.25.
$279,000. Yes. $279,757.25 is what the total amount that was supposed to be owed to Hiller. Is there a motion?
So?
Motion by Commissioner Juan Cahuana, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Udena, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Your word. No, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
You can be the judge for the decision. 2.3 Discussion on Appropriate Action, Open Bids for the CSA paving.
There could be a change.
Two bids, thank you, Mr. Garcia. We have one bid from J&amp;J Excavation and Materials for the amount of $135,395. And we have a second bid from Vega Paving for the amount of $126,720. I'm going to pass this up to you, gentlemen, so that you can see what it includes. That's the J&amp;J and I don't have extra copy for Vega, so you don't want to pass that up. And this is strictly for the paving of the parking lot. It's my distinct understanding that we are close to being able to open shop. However, we're waiting on this particular paving to be able to open, have the grand opening for the CSA.
Motion to.
Accept the bids.
Accept and close all the bids.
I have a motion by Commissioner Juan Cahuana to accept the two bids and close the bids at this time. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mozo Cahuana, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I have two point four, discussion and appropriate action, award the bids for the CSA paving. Do I have questions? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Do we go ahead and accept them, or do you need to review them and...
You don't review them right now. You have to review them. They're accessible, you can...
J&amp;J, it did, I'm sorry, Judge.
They can be awarded today?
Yeah, right now, if you want to. I mean, if you, if you feel like it, not easy to tell.
Your questions, your comments?
I was gonna ask if they did on the same thing, because one of them, and this one I was saying, they were gonna fix whatever needed to be fixed. Did the other one also mention that? The materials?
So, so based on these bids, J&amp;J shows to have more, more clarification as to whether scope of work is. Vega does show four inches of base placement. It doesn't specify that it's gonna be limestone. That's a concern. It just says base. J&amp;J does specify limestone.
Right, that's, that's why I'm saying.
The other thing is, it's, they're both showing two inches of...
Well, this is your project, so if you agree with it, I don't have a problem.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with the fact that both of these companies have performed work for us in the past. For the difference, because of the specifics on J&amp;J's and the cost of limestone, my recommendation would be to go with J&amp;J at this point. I'm only on hold, but that's just my recommendation, based on the price difference in work.
Any other questions? We have a recommendation on the floor.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Udena to grant the award to J&amp;J Excavating and Materials. I have a second by Commissioner Motocamona. Any discussion?
Judge, I think you need to put down there, we reject the lupine, but we're going with the higher bid.
Yes, sir. We do have a lower bid from Vega Paving. At this time, the Commissioner's report, based on Commissioner Udena and Commissioner Motocamona's motion, is recommending to this court that we go with the J&amp;J Excavating Materials in this particular project. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. Does the bid for J&amp;J include the striping?
It's, it's, striping was removed from the bid because the original contractor that constructed the building has approximately eight thousand dollars line item for specifically the striping.
Okay, so we'll get that.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Two point five, discussion and appropriate action to transfer the extension office to from county judge to Commissioner Precy Juan Jose Udena. This one is, thank you, sir. This office is currently under the county judge's office and discussing with Commissioner Udena. Because Commissioner Udena is already in charge over the arena, that's where this is housed and is going to, uh, extension, uh, office. My recommendation is to transfer this to Commissioner Udena. Any questions? I entertain a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Udena. Is there a second? I'm gonna second that motion. All in favor?